Everyone, we'll go ahead at this time and open up our regular session for May 3rd, 2017. I'd like to ask everyone to please either silence or turn off their cell phones if they would please, and then join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Due to budgets this week, we didn't have our normal work session agenda yesterday, so we're covering a lot of topics today during our regular session. And I'd like to ask Denise, if she would, from our original published agenda, we've got, I think, quite a few additions and some timed items. So Denise?
Sure. So under additions, we have budget resolution 2016-13. At 10:10, we will talk about the Oregon emergency management update. At 11:00, the district attorney's office, we're going to talk about office structure. And we've added for the assessor's office his cats IGA agreement with Lake County, and also economic developments go ahead discussion.
Okay. Thanks Denise.
Any deletions?
No deletions.
Jay may or may not, as the meeting starts, can have a deletion for us a little bit later or may not. So just wait and see. So our first item is public comment. I know Bert's here. Bert Young, could you please come up and join us?
State your full name, not your opinions.
I'm Bert Young, 150 South S Street here in Lakeview. And what I bring for you is a request, what we have is actually is a speeding problem on S Street. That street starts at 140, which also goes to Fourth Street, goes south to South Third Street, which is the ballpark. It's a nice street for people to transition down to South Indian Town, Burberry's, Work Hospital, BLM, those kind of locations, and then to the ballpark. And so we get some pretty good speeds out of vehicles going down there. I'm not here to point fingers, I'm just asking for something to be done. I know that the sheriff, this has been an ongoing thing since Sheriff McDonald was here. So it's always been a manpower shortage. So a couple of resolutions might be what I brought forward is a stop sign, stop signs to be put in at, which would be Center Street, which goes between Stop T and S Street. Other route would be Jazzy City, but speed bumps. And that's about it.
How much is town and how much is county?
The town where the stop sign would be is strictly county. Town is from South Third going north to one block. And then rest of it, so about that. Whole order, if that is town, rest of it is county.
So Bert, what I'm going to recommend, and we had asked the sheriff to be in attendance today, he's here for other reasons, but we'd also ask the road superintendent, I talked to him yesterday, he's not able to be, Christie just left, as well as the police chief. It'd be great, and Sheriff, you can weigh in here. Christie, we're talking about Kevin's involvement in this. For those parties to get together, look at the situation, if there's a recommendation that they'll make to us that we would act upon, I mean, it would be in our pretty view to do, we'll ask them to bring that back to us. They're the ones that know whatever possible solutions we have for that situation. We really appreciate you bringing it forward, but we're going to have to defer to them to tell us what.
Yeah, that sounds great. And the least expensive resolution, I think, is the stop signs.
Yeah.
It's not going to stop it all, but it's sure will.
Well, our road folks will know about that, and our sheriff's department will know as well as the town police chief, so thank you for bringing it forward. Appreciate it Bert, thank you. Okay, we're going to have a 10:10 item as mentioned, an update on emergency management. What about we, and I don't want to have you jump back and forth, but if you want to go ahead and, and we also have a public hearing supplement budget at 10:30. We can move that a little later if we're not through with our emergency management. Bert, if you want to talk about investment policy here, I see that. Don't need to hurry everybody, we're not in a hurry.
Good, because this policy is like a two or three year process. ORS requires the investment policy, if we're making any significant changes, to be reviewed by the Oregon Short Term Fund Board. So the significant changes I was asking for were to extend maturities for investments from 18 months to 36 months. And then also to add as an investment option for us, the Oregon Intermediate Fund, which I've been talking about for a few years, and finally got established last July. So the process is you draft your policy. I actually used Clackamas County as a model, looked at some other counties too. I looked for something that was, I would say, user friendly. It's a readable document, hopefully it helps everybody understand what our process is, what our priorities are when we are investing. So started with that, and then on January, oh, I don't remember the exact date, January 12th, the Oregon Short Term Fund Board on a phone conference reviewed this policy and then sent the letter back to you with their suggested edits. So those were to update the rating scale, which is for credit risks, so it's kind of comparable to looking at a FICO score. We want a high risk there, we want a high, like, I'm going to change that, we want low risk, so the rating is high. The second thing they asked was to include language on how performance indicators would be calculated. And then clarify, because the state has two different pools that we invest in, one is the local government investment pool, that's our overnight liquidity, that's what we use for the most part, and then the second one is that intermediate fund. So with that, I have made those edits and those changes in the investment policy. And you can see the objectives of any investment is number one, safety, you don't want to lose any public funds. Next objective is liquidity, we need to be able to meet the cash flow needs of the county operations. And then the last thing is return, which is different than what private investors would be looking for. They'd be looking for that return as number one. So it's really important for people to understand, we're looking at return as the last priority.
I wouldn't say last priority, but subsequent to higher priorities.
Yes. So we are supposed to revise this and adopt it annually. It's been a few years since we've done this process, because it got hung up in some different associations. So here it is. Do you have any, do you have any questions? For the most, well, and it does, this follows the ORS guidelines for what counties can invest in. There's different tools that we can use. So the only things over and above of the ORS statute is, is again, going out to 36 months on investments, and then number two, adding that intermediate fund. Everything else is already stated and allowed by ORS. To do something outside of ORS requires this policy. This also can be a first reading. I know you guys have had a lot of, a lot of things before you, so if you want to take some time to review this, to talk with me, I can come back at a later meeting before you adopt it, if you prefer.
I think that's a good recommendation for me, Ann.
Okay.
Yeah, that's kind of what was going through my mind. I really count on your counsel to make a recommendation that you think is the appropriate thing, and I believe that's where I'll end up, but I would like to read you a little bit more and quiz, quiz you a little bit on anything I find.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I follow this, this been a couple of months, I would have to re-read it.
Yes, and I do want you to understand what your, your policy is going to say.
You want us to understand that we're going to sign off on?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Appreciate you, Ann.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ann. Okay, we're, we're at 10:10. So at this time, we have both the sheriff and the under sheriff, and Daniel Tagg, Deputy Tagg, as well as our guest from OEM.
Commissioners, what I have here is the Oregon revised statutes, the Oregon Administrative Rules, and a funding proposal that we talked about yesterday at our budget meeting that deals specifically with emergency management. Mr. Clint Fella is here from the state of Oregon, Emergency Management.
That's Clint Fellow?
Clint Fella.
Fella, yeah.
Thank you. He's going to give you an update and information on funding mandates from the state of Oregon, and training needs and requirements to get a new person up to the level where Deputy Tagg is now. And then as you see, what we have added there is a funding proposal, and if you have any, any questions on that, Under Sheriff Paul can explain specifically to, as to the costs of keeping Deputy Tagg in this position, and then moving the position out of the sheriff's office. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce you to Clint Fella.
You're welcome. Good morning.
You're welcome. Thank you, John. Thank you for taking time out of your schedules, and I really appreciate it, and thank you to Sheriff Taylor and his office, he's been fantastic to work with, and of course, Daniel Tagg has been a great PM to work with, with my section. So I'll start off with the sort of legal requirements at ORS about what the responsibility is in the county, and then, and then what's optional, and how you can get some funding if you go a little bit farther. So under 401, Oregon rights statute, it states that the counties must, or shall, I think legal terms is counties shall, cities may have an emergency management function, which means that at the end of the day, the county is responsible for all the emergency management functions. The statute named a few responsibilities that, that go along with that, such as maybe the emergency manager. In Lake County, as in many counties, that authority has been delegated to the sheriff's office, but not response to it. And so I want to make that distinction, responsibility always lies with county commissioners, but they can delegate the authority as they see fit. They can delegate that to any, any, anyone they want, really. I mean, if some, most folks, it lies within the sheriff's office because, for a lot of very good reasons, sometimes it's the public health, sometimes they hire a contractor, but this is very typical, the way you have it here. If you want to go one, one step further, get funding, which is what you folks have done to this point, there's that emergency management performance grant, which is dealt with under Oregon Administrative Rule 104, Division 10. And that is where the feds give us money to pass through to our local partners to help fund the emergency manager position, and possibly some additional equipment or staff if there's enough money left over. You can do that part-time or full-time. A part-time position is $38,000 per year, or you can do full-time, which is 62.5 thousand per year, and you have to do a hard match for that, so the county has to come up with.
So Clint, while you're on that subject, because I, I personally have dealt with a lot of, and we've got a treasurer here as well, a lot of grants, not only at the county, but within the federal government, in different Indian cities, et cetera. And I just need to get this clarified, when we talk about the match, we're limited to only county dollars to match that with, we can't use other grants, other types of funds.
Can't use any other, you can't use any other federal funds. You can use a county or even some state dollars, yes.
And that can't be, and kind of every hard dollar, dollar for dollar.
Yes.
Can't be a vehicle or equipment or anything like that.
So I, I'm, sometimes I don't, probably, people don't understand what I mean facetious or not, but it's, so bear with me on this.
That's okay.
Maybe because I have this long drive from Paisley every day, about 45 miles away, I think of a lot of different things. But I find it peculiar, and I know we're not here today for that, and you're only delivering the messages, the one in charge of the state, but to get, to continue to get unfunded mandates, and in this case, partially funded mandates, and then to dictate what we can use to fulfill our side of it, you know, just, and the fact that, you know, we recognize it lies with us, the responsibility for, for this bit. It's sometimes a little frustrating, but we're keeping our eye on the target. We need an emergency management person, Daniel's been filling that role, and it's more about how do we get there and so forth, but yeah.
Daniel's been doing a fantastic job. It's, it's challenging sometimes for the more rural counties, because they don't, they don't have a larger population, they don't, they don't have as many disasters, they don't put the time in. Daniel has been fantastic, and, and my section doesn't cringe when they, when they work with them, because in a lot of cases, they just don't, the folks don't work their life, it's not their full-time job, and they don't put the time in, they don't, how to do the job as intended, so you guys made a fantastic choice with, with Daniel.
So, so I think we need to talk to emergency management, not the person too much. We do have a good person that's doing our, is there any opt-out for counties? Can't we push this burden to the state and say, say there's no opt-out?
You can opt out of the emergency management performance grant portion, but you cannot opt out of the responsibility portion of emergency management.
I didn't think so, I've read through this one another time, I just read in it, the word shall is definitely there.
Yeah.
And then, but I, but I do read on the next one down, it says, then I think it's more towards the city or the tribes that participate, it says participant of, the shall is a thing for the county. We have to have it, period.
Cities and tribes can, can or can't, at their discretion.
So I am reading it correct.
Yeah. Shells are nice, what you're saying, you better.
Shells have must.
And the level is explained at a minimum on number six, A, B, and C on the back to this, and that's a minimum that you have to provide under emergency management.
Under ORS, it goes, I'm sorry, under OAR, 104, it goes a little bit farther in specific, tells you exactly what you have to have and do to get the funding for the position, which same requirements, we have maybe the same requirements as the state, well, they're, they're good requirements in the sense that if you have a robust program, you really will be doing those things anyway. And so it's, it is a lot of work, but every one of those things, the emergency operations plan, and some of those, they have an emergency coordination center or emergency operations center, you really need those to handle disaster. And so you have to put a lot of work in to meet those requirements, but when a bad day comes, you really want to do all those things anyway. So you're just getting money for things that you would probably be doing if you could, again, it's a resource allocation issue, you have the time to put in, and the money to put in to serve the community in that, in that, at that level, it's not easy, certainly.
Thank you. So not being real versed in all of this, it sounds like there's just an awful lot of compliance paperwork to leverage these dollars and to be, have somebody in this position. Is there any additional help, maybe not dollar, but from the state to help on that, or lessen some of that burden because of, it sounds like, and remember, I'm not Bert, but it's visiting, it sounds like that's a lot of work, to stay in compliance, to try to get those dollars and all that stuff, that it, sometimes it gets so heavy just doing the paperwork sitting at the desk, that it's like.
It, it can be difficult. Part of what gets most jurisdictions in trouble is they have a part-time emergency manager. That doesn't always work really well. They have two people, as you do here in Lake County, you have a deputy and trying to do really two full-time ops. And because people in each of those positions can be very passionate about what they do, they don't put in four hours in each one, they put in eight hours of both. It is a great deal of work, that's why most counties are now opting for a full-time emergency manager. There's a great deal of work that, that needs to be done for an emergency manager to be effective beyond the paperwork. It's 90% relationships, you know, when, when a disaster happens, who do we go to? They, they can reach out to those people instantly, you know, really quickly, get resources moving, get people helped, get people saved. You can certainly contract that to someone outside of the agency, but.
So, so pointing along those lines, because I know we're not talking about people, but we are talking about people, because Daniel and I have said and talked about this, he knows my background in emergency management with the public government, he's got a family history, et cetera, so my question is, where, you know, the relationship part, the relationship is, it's even more than a relationship, it's an understanding of responsibilities within those relationships. And it feels like with the state requirement, that we're kind of independent of the overall greater response to emergencies. There is no one better at emergency management, as far as the ones we typically see in this parts of the world. We don't deal with a lot of floods, but that's one of the ones that we could have, earthquake because of the fall line, we could have. But reality is, it's fire, and there's no one better than the federal government and its partners in organizing and responding to those types of emergencies, and bringing in and communicating and coordinating with all those entities. But I don't know, and maybe someone in our audience, like Daniel or yourself, would speak to that right now in today's world, as to how that's different, that's going on there than what we would do independent of that, recognizing our independence, would reach out to those bodies. But it's almost like, when we've had these discussions, it's almost like, all we need to do to really fit and be prepared for disasters, is just to start participating in the training and the organization, getting our incident command skills or positions upgraded, you know, so that we can be a participating member or members in this whole process.
Yeah, there's NIMs, compliance is one of the requirements for the NPG, which is the national, I don't remember the acronym, especially now that it's, it, it sort of dictates the terminology and command structure during a disaster, and it's huge from the federal level all the way down. Again, it's a really good idea for everyone to use it, because during an emergency, we have all these folks involved, everybody's on the same page, using the same words, doing everything the same. So doing those things does give you that extra funding, and it also makes you much more effective as emergency manager, and that's the reality at the end of the day. So I think the burden is certainly there, I've read through them, and I meet with folks all the time about this. As I look through those, I don't see anything in there that is really, and I think I like your thing about the federal requirements on the state every day too, but as I really look through them, I see that these are things that if we didn't do them, it would cost our populace in some way, it would cost lives, it would cost resources, it would cost homes, property. We have the same problem, you do, we have not enough people to do everything we want to have done, and we don't have enough money to do it. So it's, for us, it's too, it's always a struggle with money, where do we put it to get the most value from it. But you're correct, if doing those, those things sort of plugs you into a greater community, and, and to use wildfires as an example, they had a pilot, 2015, that was actually EFME, generally those are done for forestry, but this was a mitigation grant that was through our office, it was the first time it had ever been done, to give money to Grant and Baker Counties, that's a very, very, very large fires, and one of those counties, well, they built out an emergency manager, but had they not, for example, Hardy County did not, their emergency manager was a, was a judge. And so after that fire season, they realized, this isn't going to work, and now they have a full-time emergency manager. But, but if they hadn't had a full-time emergency manager, or, or as dedicated one, they would have never, never participated in those wildfire grants, that was a new, a new grant. So our office, to sort of get back to your original question, what are the resources? Our office is always happy to help, to provide technical assistance wherever we can. We've been fortunate here, because Daniel says it nearly as much as a lot of folks do, but we're certainly happy to provide technical assistance any way we can, within, within our limited resources as well.
So a job well done in emergency management at county level, what are the primary functions that makes it so time consuming? Because it, we really, I'm trying to circle back to the notion, we're not reinventing the wheel, but it seems like a lot of reporting, a lot of that kind of stuff that needs to happen, as opposed to the structure itself, and somehow through intergovernmental agreement, to be able to be plugged into there, so, you know, we're just not duplicating that and then trying to come together at the last minute, just be part and parcel to that overall umbrella of emergency management.
Yeah, I think a lot of it's ongoing, there's the training and exercise requirements to participate with, for the NPG at least, again, this is if you opt in to the, to the grant, it also requires that you have an emergency operations plan, also requires that you have a, have a mitigation plan, which, which you want, because in a disaster, you'd be eligible for mitigation funds, which is over and above anything we're discussing here, so if there's a disaster or not, we can give you folks mitigation dollars that come of disasters, we can spend those anywhere in the state, if you have a mitigation plan. So those, all of those things take, take work and take time and.
Tim, this is the, go ahead.
I just want to add, the wonderful part with the fed, so the nice thing about us is we're very small and work well with our federal partners, so we do deal with them on a daily basis. And one thing we're required to do is the drill and exercise requirement, and that's where we bring all of our community partners in, we're drilling all the time. And with ICS, so the NIMs requirement requires ICS training, certain individuals have to be trained by ICS 100, 200, 300, 400, NIMs 700, 800. And then there's a bunch of other classes, as well as the professional development classes, which include like exercise design and some of that stuff that emergency managers require to take. And part of that is, my job is to reach out to our community partners, public health, the hospital, the fire departments, the ambulants, the BLM, foresters, ODF, US Fish and Wildlife, and bring those all together. And yeah, the state is slowly following the federal ICS system, and now the whole buzzwords that all hazard, incident management teams and stuff, and, you know, my job is to bring all those together, so. And that's part of, part of the time commitment, is reporting, designing these exercises, doing these exercises, and then reporting on after action, use that kind of thing.
I was going to say, last winter, I attended the FEMA OEM session in network meetings, unfortunately, I attended it because I was sitting in the latest on with the sheriff's department, and currently Daniel is with the sheriff's department. So I attended that to get up to speed on what's required. And of course, they offered this much information, I can only accommodate about this much, because it was so much information, very intense two days. But unfortunately, the situation we have, Daniel could not attend because he had other duties, which is what we talked about earlier, if he's split, he can't do either one as well as he should. And the paperwork and the training that he, that, not a person, but the position has to accomplish and to attend was man barring, how much that was. So I have appreciation a little bit for the magnitude.
Yeah, the learning curve, the question I get asked a lot is if we, if we hire someone for this position, how long does it take to get them up to speed? And the answer is a minimum of two to three years, you know, for a lot of reasons, even if they are, well, generally, you're not going to get a good emergency manager unless you steal one from another period section, because there's just not too many of them. But if you manage to do that, the manager has to deal with the grant requirements and the paperwork, but they have no clue about the relationships in the community, so they're starting to scratch on this thing. So it's a very, very long learning curve. If you don't have a lot of disasters, it's even longer, because there's no repetition here. That's good, because you don't have disasters, but it's bad, because you don't get to learn. I've been with the Office of Emergency Management for two years, and I'm still, I've been on most days feeling like a dope.
So, so we're having an open discussion, trying to figure out the direction for the county to go here.
So so as we're having an open discussion, trying to figure out the direction for the county to go here and everything. I have so many questions, but I'm honest, the first one, and sort of table it, is that I'd like to know comparison to other counties in Oregon and how, where their function lands. But telling off what Commissioner Shannon said there about our federal agencies and so many training dollars, so many things spent there, and so much on incident command and all that, and just trying to read through this minimum requirements again. Because I'm not so sure that an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the feds and not accept dollars from the state would change a lot of the paperwork type things. These guys already know everything that's going on, and we do the minimum because we're already hidden through an intergovernmental agreement, and they're doing the paperwork over there. Have you seen that structure set up at all? Because the minimums are listed out here, but it sounds like by accepting dollars, dollar for dollar, we have a whole lot of compliance things and everything that we have to do, which is being led by the federal agencies already. And I'm glad you picked up on that, Commissioner, and I'll just jump in here, because I also heard Clay say something else that's kind of key. There's probably a guy in the back of the room that's just jumping up and down in his mind. So I'll see if I can capture this right. While I want to understand that and see if we, not not just meet the minimum requirement, but be a full-fledged partner so we have all these resources that we work with on a day-to-day or week-to-week. Because I I kind of know what the federal government does on this. I mean, it's just kind of what they do, and it's not specific to one person necessarily, it's specific to an organization that handles emergency management. But the key thing that I heard you say was, without a full-vetted program, then we don't qualify when we do have that disaster for potential mitigation funding. Is that correct?
That is correct, if you don't have, if you don't have...
So we'd be on our own relative to disasters that require, you know, additional funding. We wouldn't be able to participate in that even if we were part of the bigger, greater good that was handling those disasters.
If you, to get the mitigation dollars, so that we have the grant, the grant under requires and and, you know, the plans and those kinds of things. So, yes, you would not be eligible.
So so let's talk about that for a minute, because Daniel's doing this plan. I'm not suggesting our opposition's doing this plan. I'm not suggesting independent of discussions with those other agencies. But it's a separate plan where we could be embedded into the overall, once again, umbrella of the big plan. We could have our unit losses in there and necessary requirements embedded in that plan. And then the state would not only receive a county plan, they'd also be seeing the overall federal interagency plan.
Well, and ideally, that's, the plans are are required so they're sort of tailored to your community. That's that's the benefit, if you will. Every community has different challenges, different hazards. You don't have to worry about tidal waves here or tsunamis, for example, but...
This year, I think we're, we're up against it, we've got high waters.
Plus, yeah, it's hard this year. I was driving in and I noticed, I was here about a month ago, and it was fields that were, the water was really close to the road. And I came back yesterday and I noticed that that water hasn't gotten down a inch, so...
No, no. If it wasn't for the built-up ditch tanks, you're actually liking more enjoying now than the water.
So so can you speak to at all of the county's structure? And I I guess probably more so in the frontier rural counties like us, you know, that large landmass, very low, small population, budget challenges and that type of thing.
As far as, I might have to get back to you on part of it, because I don't want to answer the wrong question. You're not found getting information and some other federal agencies that were already...
Well, no, I, how is their structure set up? Is it in the sheriff's department, is it standalone?
Oh, yes.
How are people getting the grant and how are they applying and putting on the ground so they they're getting an emergency management position?
The vast majority of counties in the state are through their law enforcement office. Some are through public health, some are just contracted, contracted out either in the short term or the long term. There are certainly benefits to having a, you know, a deputy as an emergency manager during a disaster. You know, law enforcement powers have have some advantages advantages during emergencies. So most people tend to put it there just because the law enforcement function puts them in a very advantageous position towards being tied into the community and and other agencies at the state and county level.
No problem, I'm just going to buy everything, so...
We, like most states, are in the military department, for example. That's where our function generally lands. Not with that law enforcement, but that includes, so most, to answer your question, most counties are through their law offices.
Thank you.
And this is in the side, excuse me, Commissioner, just for, when you update your webpage, because I went and printed off that for all the counties, it really clearly states when it's in the sheriff's department, but when we talk about public health, it doesn't reference that. Can we can we add that to the list?
Sure.
You know, which counties have a position that's actually...
We just updated our webpage, so there are some...
Okay, thank you.
I'll take that back, I'm actually on the on the team to prepare that, so...
And back to the federal government, they are very good at monitoring fire suppression and so forth. But when a fire gets down into the community itself, as you mentioned, we have to have our own plan, our own protection, our own preparation.
And once the fire gets off their their federal land, they 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 stand there and watch it.
But some agree that it is still a threat to the public lands. But when it comes down to actually a windstorm, firestorm getting into the community, that would still be a common target. But the planning and the preparation and things of that nature, they don't do that for outside...
Yeah, all disasters, the the federal, the the rule in emergency management is all disasters start and end locally, which means fires in Lake County or Grant County or Great County or the earthquake, really, this is where it's your home, all of your homes, my my home. We can go up the ladder of assistance to get help when we run out of resources, but really, responsibility starts and ends where that disaster is.
Well, the only caveat I'd say to that discussion there, because I spend a lot of time on incident command teams at the national level, is we don't step back, we, being the perennial federal government, we know what resources are appropriate for where the fires at. And when you're in structural situations, you don't send in wildland firefighters, you send in structural units that you haven't agreed with. And you're taking care of that event with the appropriate tool. Daniel?
So I just want to add a couple, I want to answer Commissioner Winters' question on just some of the examples of the counties around us and role of what they're doing. Townes County's emergency manager's with the nine-one center, and she reports directly to the commissioners. Hardy County's with public health. Mount Air County is a lieutenant in the sheriff's office. Deschutes County is sworn deputy with the sheriff's office. Jackson County's a non-sworn person with the sheriff's office. Joseph County, I don't know what Jimmy is, I don't know whether she's sworn with the sheriff's office or public health.
What's Wheeler County, what's what's some of the smaller counties?
Wheeler, I'm not sure. Gillon County's in the sheriff's office. I can't speak with Yumantilla, Glasgow.
Chairman?
I'm not sure about Sherman, I know Crete's in the sheriff's office. Jefferson's in the sheriff's office. Hood River, I think's in the sheriff's office, but I hope you know that one. So your smaller rural agencies, they're generally with law enforcement, because you already got that person paid to do the law enforcement thing, so they just add those duties or pull them to do emergency management, and then they supplement the law enforcement.
What it all boils down to is dollars. We know we need it, we know there's the ORS, we're trying to find a way to fund it. The state comes in, dollar for dollar, there's no soft match, we can't use their vehicles, we can't use anything like that, but they mandate for us to have it. And that's where the challenges are for these small rural areas. So it gets molded into the sheriff's department.
Yes.
And then it becomes very burdensome for them with the, to try to stay in compliance with it. And so at the end of the day, while we're working here, we we understand what we have to do. We're just trying to find a way to lessen the cost to the taxpayer. We need deputies as much as we need more than we need that almost, you know, but it's mandated to have to do it. So that that's where we're at today, is trying to find a way to fund all that is mandated to us. With with the revenue stream that has a lot of paperwork, it can't be a soft match, and trying to find a place to make it, make it happen. I think every one of us sitting here knows we need it, and we have to have it, but there's a cost to it.
Yeah. Also remember, there's there are other grants besides this one that are available, the Homeland Security Grant, for example. So there's there's more money that could be brought into the community above, beyond this grant we're talking about.
Generally, does that go towards wages and personnel, or is that for...
Homeland Security is generally for more equipment and stuff, but...
So just to go more on the Homeland Security stuff and that grant. So four or five years ago, that changed, all the counties were dedicating so much money to that. And we never, we haven't gone after that money for that money since two thousand, two thousand and one. That's what bought the large cash or radios way back, back in two thousand, two thousand and one-ish. We were guaranteed that pot of money, and then now it's on the competitive cycle to get that money. And there's conference calls, I've sat on them, and I know, as you get, generally, it's about a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars what they want the, your project to be. If you're doing a bigger project, they're funded that if you stand over the years. And they've said, history has shown, if they funded the first year, they go fund the rest of it. So, and it goes back to taking the time to write those grants and and be able to sit there and do that. That's one of the issues I have is, for writing grants, or I set up these community meetings, two o'clock, I'm on duty, one forty-five, I'm off to a hot call, not even a hot call, just, it could be a cold call, and I don't make that meeting, and I got the community partners sitting there waiting. So that's, that's the frustration of issues, you know, my name, reputation, Daniel didn't make another meeting, he's off doing top stuff, and how do we get our community partners to pay us? And the worst happens. That also means like our emergency operations plan and a natural hazard mitigation plan, which we have to have if we want to partake in this natural hazard stuff, which if we're going down that road for the flood in Adele, that's how we're going to be able to fix their die, is apply for a grant to fix that. We have to update that every five years, and that's one thing we're trying to do before June, and it's really hard doing that with maybe being called, because I recall just the day-to-day operations, that's why it's important. We're trying to say, we need help, and a full-time appointment.
Dan, you have something?
Curious, if the Homeland Security Grant might be an option for us when we're looking at digital radio equipment?
It crossed my mind too, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep. When it comes down to...
And I've reached those wheels with the grant committee, so those relationships are important.
Well, I'll put it in motion, Daniel.
I just need the time to sit there and type.
Any other questions or...
No, we incredibly appreciate you coming today and a lot of good information. Looking forward to working with you, us meeting our requirements, and as Commissioner Winters alluded to, you know, the financial ramifications, but we know we have the responsibility, we'll get to where we need to get. But we're looking forward to a really good relationship and opportunities to improve our our operation here, community protection, so.
We talked about firearms in the federal agency, we do set off, as Commissioner Shannon alluded to, we do set off on firearms. We just get a little bit of tremors, I guess, is not really the thing. I'm not comfortable with that. But if we have the Cascadia effect, there's going to be a powerful rippling effect.
Big ripple, yeah.
Big ripple effect. But you never know when that's going to happen, so it could be years and years and years of people who are asking, I guess, in anticipation.
Yeah, I think the the most recent number I heard was that there's a thirty-five percent chance it's going to happen in the next fifty years, which is, which is about seven times more likely than a San Andreas Fault. So you must hear about the San Andreas Fault, there's only a five percent chance, I think, it's going to happen in the next, five or six percent it's going to happen in this fifty years. So, um, emergency management stuff, it's one of those things that there's no emergency disaster, there's no news. It's happened in fact, you know, it's, but then it's too late, and so it's hard to prioritize any, you know, we're struggling with that. Our agency too, kind of, we're cascading when we have floods that are happening today, and where do we put our our resources?
So so Clay, you're still here, and I'm glad Commissioner Kessler brought that up, because, and I alluded to it earlier, sometimes I say things facetiously, I have to raise my hand and say that was a joke. But this is serious, and and I've mentioned this on more than one occasion. We are one of the highest-known communities in the West for renewable energy, to be able to sustain ourselves. Work that's been done through our area commission on transportation, as we all said on the board, through Commissioner Winters' chairs, has recognized the need for the infrastructure for roads to make those investments on the east side where the Cascadia folks from there would want to come to, and we'd still have to maintain interstate commerce, et cetera, et cetera. But this is my idea, given the renewable energy part of this, that if the power grid were knocked out as as part of all of this, and we needed to have something that we could count on here locally, what a better place to have a disaster response area in place than a county like Lake County, for the state and the federal government to collectively prepare ahead of time to have, you know, the buildings and the infrastructure and everything else here. You know, we'd be a willing partner in this, to have the employees and the infrastructure in place. So when that event happens, because we all believe, it may not be in our collective lifetimes, but when it happens, this is one place where we could have continuation of all government and other functions. And I would really like to see that taken, I don't think people don't take it serious necessarily, but they just, it's like everything else. It's not until we actually have it hit us in the face, or the types of disasters that could hit us in the face, we would have no time to prepare for properly, or we could prepare for it ahead of time, and it's those investments.
It brings up a good point on the solar, we do that, and we give more all the time. And if the power grid goes out between here and kind of falls, Pacific Power, we do have a little backup we tend to see from our crews through our rural electric. But a lot of this solar due to regulations at the state, is their machinery is only to feed into the grid, but not to feed back like into the hospital, all the other buildings to solar. But if we talk about the grants, if we could get the grant for that equipment to feed it back into, to self-sustain through solar, would that be a logical grant option?
I don't, I'll check with the grant manager, I don't do Homeland Security, but I can certainly verify that. And I don't see why that would not be eligible.
We would, we would, first have to do some legislative change on some of the rules. But I think we would have a good argument for that, and then it's a case of financing. I forgot what the name of the piece of equipment that can be redirected back to your own facility. But that's something we never really pursue, I mean, it's just logical.
I'll check with the president tomorrow and get back to you, Daniel.
Really should be driven by the state agency needing that place for that cascade, for solar to be driven by us.
Yeah.
Having the place, not only solar, but geothermal, having the place and having the incident command center in Lake County, put it here, invest in here, put employees here, and then when the Cascadia effect happens or whatever, argue states law. That's where it really needs to be driven. The concept has come from Commissioner Shannon. Somebody at the state or the federal level should realize we're sitting in the right place and invest in this community and invest in or in the continuation of operations during a major disaster. That's, and I don't want to speak for you, I know that was your idea, your scope, but...
I just think in this day and age, we have the ability to be prepared. It is an investment, but it's an investment we know someday we will use, yes.
Yes. I think our continuity of operations plan at the state, because we're in the military department, we tend to, it's military facilities and, but that does not say that they would not be able to do something outside of that.
Well, we should address that through, you know, we, our airport, our local airport's improving all the time. We can make improvements there. We have an airport base that we can make improvements there. You know, there's all this stuff. But it's even better than that. The backscatter site is military right here, it can, it has the power, there's solar going in up there. We already have the presence. We have the wide open space. Lake County's vast, we're 83, 84 hundred square miles. That up there, it, the presence is already there. The ability to put the solar around there to make the state efficient top rate, it's there. Had those discussions years ago, as opening on that. We're sitting there with just multiple ways we, we are there.
And there's less seismic potential of it scoring part of Lake County, too.
Yeah. Yeah, there is a site, I mean, I usually, because I'm concerned about the appearance of how things would look as the Paisley resident and the county commissioner from all of Lake County, but Paisley, quite frankly, besides the backscatter site, is an ideal location. You know, a lot of lands that would be available, a small airport now, but it could very easily be expanded. There's, but we could beat this to death, but I want to put it on your radar to be thinking about.
Absolutely. So. And resupply is coming in, it'll be coming in from California, Interstate 5 would be out of commission at Shasta Lake, so it would be coming up from Reno.
395, 97 coming to key part, from the other part.
140 east. What was talking about? Oh, Highway 97 in case Interstate 5 goes out. When Interstate 5 goes out, it doesn't go out at the Florida line north, it can go out of Shasta Lake.
No worries. Yep. Okay. Sheriff. Just to close on this, Commissioners, just so you know where the sheriff's office stands on this, Daniel's supposed to be splitting his duties 50/50. 50% as being a deputy, 50% as OEM. When it comes to prioritize, I just want the Commissioners to know, when I have to prioritize, if it comes to OEM or it comes to serving the citizens of Lake County, I want to choose service citizens of Lake County every time. OEM will have to take a pack seat to his primary responsibilities.
If he was 75, 25?
That would be nice. Well, I think Daniel's doing about 85, 15 right now.
85 OEM?
No, 85...
Deputy?
Deputy, 15.
OEM.
Not because we're ignoring those responsibilities, but we just are so busy, we can't get to them.
Yeah. The health and welfare of our citizens comes first.
And I'll give you a perfect example of that. Last night, a hostage situation in the city of Lakeview. We have one officer working, we call out our entire resources for Lake County Sheriff's Office to take care of that call because the city doesn't respond. That's what we're facing. So, not only are we working our shift, we're working a double shift to come in and take care of that. We cannot continue to do this on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you, Commissioners.
I appreciate you very much. I'm by a volunteer.
I will. Yeah. For a reason or not, I love the air.
Okay. We have a separate office here. We're going to take a five minutes to five, or five minutes to go to the lab. Right. I've got an update to your agenda. Okay. Spoken with the DA. Okay. We think that it would be more productive if she doesn't come in today and she and I meet with, either she and I or she and I and Commissioner Kessler meet sometime next week, we should be able to get salary numbers together for the position that she's proposing, get a better proposal together. That would be appreciated. So, not strike her from the agenda today. Thank you, Ken. Appreciate that. We'll take about a six-minute break. We'll reconvene at 11.